We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you Jake, is there support?
Support.
Thank you Heather, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to approve the agenda passes. We are going to move right on to new certified staff candidate introductions with Adam.
Dr. Simmey.
Caught me off guard there. Dr. Sumington is actually not in attendance tonight, so I will just hold the introduction to the new staff, the higher recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, well with that, that moves us right to learning highlights and communication updates and with Mr. Mark Snyder.
Hello, thank you very much Danielle, appreciate it. We have some items, but we've missed a couple of days here, so we have, we've tried to work out the different things. So in terms of the Lions, obviously Lions fever is catching everyone these days. It's worked out pretty well because the last recent couple of weeks, we had assemblies set up already. They have a character group that goes around that is associated with the Lions and they go to the different spots, you know, around the schools in the country and it's not the players, but it's, they have an organizational team that basically teaches all these different values and everything and that's Chris up there. And what, they went to Paint Creek one week and they went to Weber another week and the students, you know, get to see the mascot and they learn all these character traits and they do some singing and dancing and everything. And they really, it's great engagement and now obviously with the Lions being so good right now and everything, I can't believe I said that. There, it's an opportunity really for the kids to be really engaged and listen and absorb the thing. They had done this at Carpenter earlier in the year as well, so it's really a great program. And the PTOs I think are the ones usually bringing it in, but it's a great assembly, so. Professional development, this was on Martin Luther King Day. Heidi can, if you want to share a little bit about kind of what, you had previewed it here, but how it went.
Yeah, actually I was going to comment on that as well. Martin Luther King Day, we had district-wide professional development where staff got to choose amongst different sessions that they attended and there were every topic that you can think of. And then they also had an opportunity to attend the Wellbeing Fair as part of a session as well. So many positive comments and I think the day went very well. We had many of our own presenters that just specialized in different areas and then we did have some outside presenters as well. So it was a great day.
Thank you. Well, Wellbeing Fair, Adam's staff did the Wellbeing Fair, there were 22 vendors, right? And you want to, let me explain kind of the rationale about what it was and everything.
Nope, yeah, the Wellbeing Fair was extremely successful in the past. We've held that as an evening event. This year we held it in the afternoon at the high school in conjunction with the MLK PD. 22 vendors, again, just focusing on the different pillars of the Wellbeing Committee and allowing staff to get connected through them. So it was great.
Thank you. We talked last year, if you remember, about the HeartSafe Schools at the different, and we had three different schools certified last year, at Orion Oaks and Pine Tree Center. The high schools are certified as well already. And now Blanch Sims is starting that process. They had, the HeartSafe designation, if you don't remember, recognizes the school's efforts to prevent sudden cardiac death among the young by preparing for cardiac emergency. Members of the school community know how to recognize the signs of cardiac arrest and they show they have the capabilities within the school to prepare for incidents and things like that. And Ken had them at Blanch Sims and it was a great assembly and they got to be educated in that circumstance as well. So Ben has done, been doing a lot for the election, everything. This is one of our big initiatives. Ben went to ONTV and went on their daily talk show, Orion Today, and kind of interacted. We've shared that out already on social media, we'll continue to share that out quite a bit because it really was, I think, a good interaction between Ben and they, and they were asking questions that, you know, citizens would ask, right? I mean, is that generally?
Yeah, they did, yeah, I thought they did a good job of getting out the information that was necessary through their questions for sure. In a way, it was, it was good.
Yeah, so that's, so we continue obviously to do the election information in all, every way that we can. There's a PTO meeting happening tonight at Stadium and, you know, Ms. Heinz is sharing that information. So it's really everything we can do and we continue to do that, so. The LHS Dragon Day, we've talked about these in the past where the elementary students, the older elementary student, upper elementary students go to the high school, they spend a day with the leadership students and they kind of do different activities in terms of building some leadership skills and getting comfortable with kind of this big building, kind of seeing what the high school kids do. They eat lunch there and everything, so Carpenter had their turn to do that, so it was nice. Sellout, obviously the annual event is a big deal. The students give their cell phones, or they put them in a bag now and they carry them with them. They don't use their cell phones for the day, there's a lot of engagement. Over 2,000 students participated this year and they had the Heroes Assembly, you can see down there, community heroes who were all there and participated in activities and stuff like that. So, you know, it's a signature event for our high school and it went off well. Athletics, there's been a number of, you know, the Winter Athletics is in full swing and that's, it's been exciting. Boys Bowling, we're the Oakland County Champions, so that's a major milestone, one of the biggest milestones of the winter so far. And Wrestling, you see down in the middle, at the first place, they had some individuals, Hunter Swash and Landon Morris at the Lakeland Tournament, they were winners. That was exciting for them. Stadium Drive had, they hosted for all of the different elementary students last weekend and the parents came in and everything and the first through, first through third graders came and they showed their models, their posters and the different things they've learned in terms of robotics to this point. So it was real exciting. So at all different levels, we've got a lot of engagement in different things throughout the district. Does anyone have any questions?
No, just a comment, I had the opportunity to go to my very first sellout and that was amazing. The energy is insane in that building, it was so much fun and, you know, everyone was, it's a great cause, so. It was a good job to leadership and the two students that presented that more like the MCs, Joey and Connor, yeah, they're, they're meant to be in front of people. I don't think I could have done what they did that day, so.
Excellent, any other comments or questions for Mark? I think we're good, thanks Mark.
Thanks Danielle, thanks.
All right. From there, we are moving into the recognition of School Board Appreciation Month and I believe we turn that to Ben.
All right, well, thank you and congratulations. I have a few prepared words that I'm going to go through, but as I mentioned at the last January board meeting that this is School Board Recognition Month, so I'm going to go through some prepared words and then talk a little bit about what you have in front of you. But Lake Orion Community Schools joins 537 local school districts across Michigan to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month. As board members, you have led and collaborated through many challenges to provide a great education for our Dragons. Celebrating School Board Recognition Month is just one of the small ways to express our appreciation for all that you do. You represent the views and priorities of the community and the complex system of maintaining and operating our schools. You also reinforce the principle of local control in public education, which is an important and highly valued aspect of education in our great state. A school board's main goal is to support student achievement. To achieve that goal, you have accomplished much this year, including the following. Approved multiple opportunities to inspire our students. Supported our strategic plan impacting students, staff, parents and the community. Implemented bond projects approved by the community through fiscal oversight, highlighted by the opening of the beautiful Blanch Sims Elementary. Collaborated and learned together to build a stronger governance team. Aligned the use of the district's financial resources. Supported a safe and orderly climate where students can learn and teachers can teach. And lastly, collaborate to solve problems and support all of our successes. Even though we're providing special recognition during this month to show you our appreciation through these words, cards and gifts from schools, we recognize your contributions reflect a year-round voluntary effort. No matter what challenges lie ahead of us for 2024, you will continue to govern to improve student achievement and provide exceptional education for all of our Dragons. Thank you to each of you for your dedication and service and the following members in the years of service. Steve Drakos, who was unable to be with us here this evening, has had 13 years of service for us. Bergen McQuiston, 12 years of service. Scott Taylor, who is also absent this evening, nine years of service. Jake Singer, five years of service. Danielle Brissette, three years of service. Susan Flaherty, three years of service. And Heather Sanawi, one year of service. So thank you very much, we do appreciate everything that you've done. As I mentioned, some of the schools have brought you some gifts. You have in your bags some calendars to reflect throughout the year, a bunch of things that have happened and Mark does those and puts those together for us. You have some professional, you have in there a certificate, you're going to be getting professional name badges that are, we ordered them a while ago, but they're so perfect, it's taken a long time. They're on a boat somewhere probably, but anyways, yeah, supply chain issues, but they're coming. And then also, we have a certificate in there for you to get some Lake Orion swag and you'll get an email tomorrow to take the next steps on that. And certainly, there are some other things from the schools as well that are in your bag. So thank you for all your dedication and service.
Thanks so much. Awesome, don't go too far because here you are, no kidding. And we're, thank you so much for that Ben, very kind. Back to Ben for to present our Walden Middle School Showcase.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, this evening we have Principal Sarah Wenland, who is here from Walden Middle School, so I'm going to ask her to come forward and share a little bit about what you all are going to see tonight.
Hi, everybody, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm very excited to share with you our Walden Robotics Team. Before I give them the floor, I know they're very excited as well. I just want to point out how incredible they are. In the fall, right before school started, Assistant Principal at Walden, Dakota Cooper and myself got to meet with the entire team and the coach and they gave us a very in-depth presentation about the work that they do and to say that I was jaw-dropped with the amount of professionalism and knowledge and critical thinking that goes into all of it was just, like I said, jaw-dropping and super impressive. So I am so proud of them, they had a fantastic season. I always looked forward to my emails Monday morning from their tournaments of all the awards that they won, so I'm very excited to share this with you. So without further ado, I have Coach Christine Russell here and a portion of our Walden Robotics Team.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I'll let you guys get organized, I have just a little bit to share before they do their presentation. So I'm Christine Russell, I'm the leader for the team and I've been helping in some way with Walden Robotics since 2019. My daughter was a part of the team and is now a part of the 302 High School Team. And running this team takes a lot of parent support, so there's 14 kids on the team and every parent helps support in some way. But it also has taken a lot of support from the district as well and we appreciate that greatly. So every year, to run a team at the middle school level, it takes somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000 to put our robot together and to organize all of the funds and things that we do. A number of, they'll talk about some of the sponsorships they get to help support that, but we also receive a grant from the Michigan Department of Education to support us and Lake Orion helps organize that and make sure that we receive those funds and we really appreciate that because it helps make our team strong. Also this year, Lake Orion provided us additional space than we've ever had before. So our teams in the past met at the high school, at the high school shop and it was a little cramped. And so this year, the district decided to help us out by opening up the CIRC to our middle school teams. So we each had our own classroom that we could meet in, we had a shop that was shared. It helped us to be able to have more of our own space, but also to be able to collaborate more with the other Lake Orion Middle School Teams as well. Because while we do compete against each other, we do collaborate with each other too. So it was really nice to have that support from the district, so we thank you very much. So you're going to hear from six of our students on our team. We have 14 kids, but they're all busy running around kids, doing sports, involved in all sorts of other things. So these are the kids that could be here today. I also want to let you know that we've had so much interest in robotics across the district that while traditionally each middle school has had one robotics team, we've added a fourth team this year so that we didn't have to turn kids away. First Robotics only allows 15 kids on a team at the middle school level, so we had so many kids interested that we started a fourth team this year that's kind of a combined team with kids all across the district. And that team also had eight Walden kids. So we're highly represented in the middle school robotics across the district and just so proud of all these kids. You have some really brilliant kids coming up in your district and we just appreciate that you support their passions and their interests and their learning. So we're going to hear from them a little bit about what they do. Kevin, you can start us off.
Hello, we are the Walden Dragons and we are proud to share with you the progress of our team this year. Our team is split into four sub-teams, Code, Build, Business and Drive.
We follow an engineering process to guide, we follow an engineering process in all that we do as a team. In the defined stage of our work, our toolkit includes game manuals, use of human robot and organizing our goals. This year we developed six subsystems for our robot. To complete the season's challenge, we needed to build a chassis, intake, delivery, suspending system, pixel placer and paper airplane drone launcher. A tool we heavily use to guide our choices is a weighted decision matrix. A decision matrix helps us make decisions based on criteria and constraints rather than just guessing or voting on what we like best.
This year, our team focused heavily on CAD and mathematics. During the build stage, we were always returning to our CAD model to help guide our work. This year mentors have helped us apply math concepts including the Pythagorean theorem, gear ratios and simplified physics. Most of this is math that we have not yet learned in our middle school classes. Each match is started by a 30-second autonomous period. In this period, our robot runs on pre-programmed code to achieve as many tasks as possible. It uses sensor input cameras and detailed coding to make sure that everything gets done quickly and efficiently and we earn as many points as possible. The next two minutes are the driver control period where we use controllers to drive the robot around and achieve as many points as possible.
Our competition season, that's from September to December. We had a great time this year competing at competitions and building our robot. We also won many awards this year, including the Connect Award, the FLECK Qualifier and the most important award at the North Branch Qualifier, the Inspire Award. The Inspire Award goes to teams who exemplify all of first's most important attributes, like having good robot design, good coding and spreading STEM throughout our community. We had a great time competing this year.
Throughout the year, our team also visits local industries to learn about robotics and see what we are doing relates to what is happening in the industry. At our Hare Tech Industry Visit, we saw an advanced CAD program. They had each part of their model, they had each part of their model highlighted in different colors to make it easier to locate different parts throughout the subsystem.
Our industry visits with oceaniering and continental, both focused on how sensors are being used in cars and things like forklifts and factories.
During our visit to the Active Summer Showcase, we were interviewed by a marketing team that was documenting this event. We saw this as an opportunity to learn and ask questions about how to better our interview questions and lighting.
This year, we went to the Automate Conference in Detroit. There were over 700 robotics-related companies there. We learned about robotics industry plans and their plans for the future.
The business team focuses on documentation and sustainability through meeting minutes, the engineering notebook and the engineering portfolio.
The business team stepped up their work this year by focusing a lot more on video production. These videos posted to various social platforms helped build relations with not only our community but other FTC teams as well.
This, another improvement this year is that we went from three platinum sponsors to seven. When you're out of platinum sponsorship, you're on our t-shirt, banner and robot.
We do more than just build a robot. We also make sure to spread STEM throughout our entire community. We hold a fourth through fifth grade summer camp that allows kids to learn all about what robotics is. We also run a first through third grade event that allows kids to show off what they've been doing in first. We all, we, we show up to many events to make sure kids know and learn about what robotics is all about and what it means to be a robotics team.
This year, we added a Lego drive to our robotics. We collected and donated 12 large tubs full of Legos.
It's okay, how about I read the hand card? It's okay, I got you. So the end of this is that outreach is about making the community, community a better place. So one of the things they wanted to talk about also is they did a food drive, support to the post office food drive. And so how many bags did you guys fold this year?
5,000 bags.
It's a lot of bags, so those go, those go out to all of the homes for people to give their bags to the post office. So we helped with that as well this year. So the point is just there's a lot of different things they're doing to get out into the community and it's exciting. So their team works hard all year long to accomplish the first robotics missions while also having fun and having a positive impact on others. So we want to thank you for listening about our Walden Robotics Team, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, they are able to answer, but I know you guys have a lot on your agenda today too.
What is your robot, what is, does it have special skills, what does it do?
So our robot is set to do a few specific tasks. We have to intake something called a pixel, it's really just a colored hexagon. And then we have to be able to take it and place it on what's called a backdrop. It's an area, area you can place the pixels. We also need, our robot also needs to be able to do like a pull-up, where it needs to be able to pull itself up onto a bar and then stay there until the end of the match. Our robot does a couple other things, but yeah, there are a good deal of specialized things a robot does. It also needs to be very good and very fast at driving. We have it on a slow, slow speed because we don't want to hit anything.
That's awesome.
Turn around so we can see the other side.
Oh, wow. 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 Ooh. You're blessed. I was just going to ask that, does your robot have a name?
Um, so it, it's a bit of a mouth filler, it's, its full name is Robot Downey Jr. Hear me out. So obviously based off the actor that plays Iron Man, but that, that was an intentional choice as the theme for this FTC season was center stage. Like, so you know, I chose like an actor's name and parodied it on a robot, Robot Downey Jr.
Awesome.
Good.
That's awesome.
It's multiple meanings.
Right, that's awesome. That's amazing.
You worked your team number onto the side, is that a requirement or just a statement or feature that you guys have?
Required.
Required.
It's also useful as we were kind of bumping into things on the side, so they kind of serve as bumpers.
No, you said you have 14 members. Are they, what grades, do you guys have a lot of kids that will return next year?
So First Robotics at the middle school level is sixth through eighth graders. We have incoming fifth graders going into sixth grade that I was joining our team. We have incoming fifth graders going into sixth grade that I was joining our team. Like we have some new sixth graders, like Ben. He's the only one that could show up today. And then we have some eighth graders that are leaving. Elaine is the only one that could show up today. And yeah, we have seventh graders and sixth graders will be returning next year, and we'll be having a ton of fun in robotics.
Yeah, I was just super impressed by your presentation. Very, very impressed. I thought there was a teleprompter up here. I was like, wow. I mean, that was incredible. Way to go. Thank you for coming and taking the time to share this with us. It means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And there are cookies on the table right there. They are for you, so take cookies on your way out. Yes, thank you so much for coming. Very impressive. We really appreciate it. You don't have to stay. I forgot that. Take your... You don't have to stay. And the cookies are for you, so. I know. The thing is amazing.
I like their name, too.
It's very cool.
Very impressive.
It is amazing.
Robot Downey Jr. I like it.
Excellent. All right. Give them a sec to get all their Robot Downey Jr. That thing's got to be heavy. I was going to ask how heavy it was. Thank you again. Have a good night, everybody.
You guys came on your snow day.
I know. Yeah, you came on your snow day, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think about that. You had to come on your snow day. Okay. Next up is public participation related to action items on the agenda, and we have none this evening. So we will then go right to Ben, back to Ben, for strategic area discussion items and governance.
Okay, I have a few items. Tonight's the governor's state of the state, so we'll have a better understanding of how she'll create her executive budget and, you know, kind of push the state to move in the direction. So we're kind of anxiously waiting to hear about that, and I'm sure we'll hear more over the next few days. The Census Revenue Conference occurred, and there was a 2% increase, which is about $360 million in the School Aid Fund, and that was an increase from the May projection, so that's good. And then another part of that was that the number of students lost was about 8,755 students in '23-'24, with a projection of yet another 6,500 students that will be lost from the state of Michigan. But that seems to be a continuing trend of students leaving our state. So that's another data point that they often share. So really, not a whole lot of action, as we've talked about. There's, you know, there are definitely things going on in Lansing, but there's not a whole lot of action that is occurring. I did want to remind everybody that February 27th, 2024, we do have two millage proposals. The non-Homestead replacement millage is going to be on the ballot. That's really important for us to maintain our eighteen mills that we have to have in order to fully fund the education for all of our students. And then also, we have the sinking fund replacement that will allow us to expand our use of those dollars, which is about $5 million a year, to utilize towards transportation costs and technology if it's something that we need to do as a school district. So the absentee ballots are out. People start voting now. We have a little over 30,000 voters within our precinct, and a little over 15,000 of them have absentee ballots sent to their homes. So people have already started to vote, so please just make sure that people are getting the information necessary to make an educated decision. We have lots of information on the website. Big green tab in the middle has the word "election" in it. Click on that, and it's all things elections. So any questions for me?
No, I was just going to add that I thought it was really interesting, both on the county and in the state level. The lobbyists have told us that due to the election, because it's 54-split in the House, till those elections come up to write those districts that lost people to them taking other leadership roles in their community. It's been referred to as an unusual lame duck. In fact, the lamest of all lame duck sessions that we are in until things change. Just thought I'd put that out there.
Yeah, and it's okay because there's been lame ducks that haven't gone so well for many, so.
The joke was, can they even agree on naming a highway when it's split 54-54?
All right. So tonight will be our policy committee. We had the report on the last meeting. This is our second reading of all the revised policies and whatnot. Does anyone have any additional questions that they'd like to ask of the policy committee this evening before we have the opportunity to vote on those later? All right. So yeah, we'll get those approved later. And that moves us right into student achievement with Ms. Heidi Mercer.
Well, MLK PD was on my list, so we covered that. Just a reminder, at our next board meeting, we will be having a presentation regarding the elementary math pilot. That pilot has concluded. We have met with the committees, and there will be a recommendation coming to the board at the next meeting along with the presentation. And then at this point, we just want students back in school, please. That's what our goal is. And then regarding the bond, I think that I had mentioned this previously, but Paint Creek is starting their Phase Two planning along with the high school and circ. They're in their very infancy stages. They've just met once. We are scheduled again to meet next Wednesday. So we'll provide an update then.
There we go.
Thank you.
Questions for Heidi? Yes, Heather?
For the elementary math pilot presentation, will that be in the packet prior to, or will we be getting it live next week?
You'll be getting it live.
This is going to be a quiz. Anything else for Heidi?
Just to be clear, though, it'll be... We'll have it here once, and then we'll make a decision the next day.
Okay, because I thought it sounded like... Okay, I thought it sounded like we were...
Yeah, I thought that's why you were asking.
Okay. Got it.
Next week is just the presentation, the following meeting.
Will be the approval. I thought so. I thought I heard maybe it was...
Nope. Perfect. Great. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, that moves us right on to human resources with Adam's update.
Yes, I already spoke about the well-being committee, or the well-being fair that I was going to mention in my report. So all that's left is tonight is my honor to introduce Dr. Todd Simmington. He's unable to be in attendance tonight, but I'd still like to give a brief introduction of him. Dr. Simmington earned his master's and specialist degrees in school psychology and earned his PhD in educational leadership through Oakland University in 2021. His previous work experience includes work at Madonna University and Oakland Community College as a professor and at Farmington Public Schools as a school psychologist. Very accomplished in the field, and I believe will be an excellent fit for LOHS. So I am recommending Dr. Todd Simmington for hire as our school psychologist at Lake Orion High School.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Any questions, comments for Adam? Looks going to be a great addition to the high school. All right, so we're going to move right on to finance and operations with Andrea.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take a little longer than last board meeting, so.
Yeah, sad the stand dropping that far. The first item on the agenda is the Oakview and Walden Building and Site Improvement Bid Award. For your approval, these projects were previously presented as a part of the bond and the sinking fund projects. They are being funded combined through the bond and the sinking fund. The improvements include new carpeting as well as HVAC and then site improvements of concrete and asphalt upgrades. The combined recommendation is $8,702,905, of which the base bid is $6,716,780. The allowances and contingencies, $1,986,125. In your packet is the detail of the contractor recommendations. These were, as required, publicly bid according to Lake Orion's and the state's requirements. We had a total of ninety-two bids for thirty-one contracts. Those recommendations do start on page seventy-seven, listing Oakview and then Walden. If you do recall, back in November, the HVAC equipment was approved. That is a part of this bid, but it is not included in these numbers. But it's the total project. And we did that in November because of lead times needed for that equipment. So that is the Oakview and Walden Bid Award. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Andrea on any of the bids for Oakview or Walden? No, I think we're good.
And that's work that will be done this summer?
That's correct. Yes. Okay, then no questions. Moving on to the financial report. This package is as of December 31st. So there's two additional months being included in this pack as the last report was October 31st. I do want you to know, as far as the current budget is proposed, that is the original budget. It does not represent the amended budget that was just approved at the last meeting. So sometimes there's going to be some variances, and that's what that would be related to. You will see there's commentary in the beginning, and then fund schedules presented for the general fund, pine tree center, community service, and food service. The cash and investment report, the cash flow report, cash disbursement detail, and purchasing card activity. I will note that as far as the general fund is concerned, we have taken in revenue of approximately $38 million, or 38%. And we have expended approximately $43 million, or 42%. Do you have any questions on the financial report?
Questions for Andrea on the financial reports? Okay, I did not hear any.
Okay.
Bar's still pretty high, Andrea. Excellent. Okay, well, we have moved right on to action items in a very quick manner for this evening. So may I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the following consent agenda items: Approve minutes from the January 10th regular and organizational meeting, the January 17th, 2024, special meeting and closed session. Also approving out-of-state and overnight field trip requests for LOHS AP Physics to Sandusky, Ohio on May 20th of 2024, for the LOHS Robotics Team to Marion Springs, Michigan on March 1st through the 3rd of 2024, the LOHS Robotics Teams to the University Center of Michigan on April the 4th through the 6th of 2024, and also the LOHS Robotics Team to Houston, Texas on April 16th through the 21st of 2024.
Excellent. Thank you, Bergit. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Susan. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. Okay, we're going to move right on to approving our policy revisions. May I please have a motion to approve the policy revisions?
I move to approve the proposed revisions for board policies: 1540, 2370.01, 7217, 7540.03, 8305, 8531, 0122, 1420, 3120, 3130, 3131, 3139, 3140, 3142, 3220, and 5610 as presented.
Thank you, Heather. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Jake. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The policy revisions pass. May I please have a motion to approve a certified new hire?
I move to approve a certified new hire as presented.
Thank you, Heather. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The certified new hire is approved. And welcome to Dr. Simmington? Perfect. Doctor... I didn't want to say it wrong. Dr. Simmington, we look forward to having you with our Dragon family and at the high school. Okay, and lastly, may I please have a motion to approve the Oakview and Walden Building Site and Bid Awards?
I move to authorize administration to execute contracts listed in the 2024 Building and Site Bid Package for Oakview Middle School and Walden Middle School in the amount of $6,716,780, with allowances and contingencies of $1,986,125 for a total recommendation of $8,702,905 as presented.
Thank you, Jake. Is there support?
Support.
All the support. Thank you so much. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The Oakview and Walden Building Site and Bid Awards have been approved. All right, that moves us right on to public participation for other non-action items, and there is none, so that moves us to recap and next steps.
The only thing I wanted to mention is in February, we have our workshop, the Financial Forecasting Workshop. The board has talked about wanting to do professional development in each of those workshops. So if you have some thoughts around that, if there's items that we need to be addressing, please let's make sure to get those to Danielle and myself so that we can plan that meeting accordingly, so.
All right. All right, with that, we will go to closing comments, and we will start with Andrea.
I just want to say it was great to see Walden here tonight. I have, in the other position, been able to coordinate all the grants received through the state with the robotics, and the number of teams continues to grow, especially at the elementary level. So I have no doubt that there will be a lot of experience coming up to the middle school level. But it's always nice to see, and I see names, so it's nice to put a face to Christine Russell.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep, quick shout out to our Walden Middle School Robotics Team. That was awesome. Excellent presentation, very informative. I was impressed with some of the language used in there, too. I'm like, this is good for middle school. And also, just during the presentation, the support and perseverance of that team was awesome. So job well done to Walden. Shout out to the student leadership team in Lake Orion High School for sellout. Danielle and I walked in together to that event, and we both were commenting on how it was our first time being there. As you said, energy was amazing. It was awesome. So very good job to Ms. Hogan, Ms. Redmond, and the leadership team up there. And then just echoing Ben's statements from earlier, a big thank you to all the school board members. This... I know we officially have a month, but we recognize and appreciate all that you do throughout the entire year. So thank you very much for all you do for LOHS.
Thank you, Adam. Heidi?
Shout out to all of those that helped with the MLK PD planning. A lot of work went into that behind the scenes. So thank you to all of our staff members who helped out with that. I'm always impressed by the robotics team. It's amazing how the robot is just built, and then it starts to move. I'm just in awe. I wouldn't even know where to start. So congratulations to that team. And as Andrea said, this program has grown so much over the years, and it's so exciting to see. So that's awesome. And thank you to the board for your dedication and your support of the community, our district. You are appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
All right, definitely echo all those things. And the robotics team was great. Kevin, you did a wonderful job. It was an amazing way to start off that presentation, so good for you. Happy birthday to Jake. He had a birthday this week, so thanks for coming back. That's our gift from you, right? That you got to come back to a meeting, not sick anymore. First one this year, right?
Missed the first two.
Right, right, right. Did just want to acknowledge, you know, with the inclement weather days that we've had over these last few days, we are working. There's still four roads that are very difficult for our buses to go down. I think it's really important to recognize that our road commission continues to work very, very hard. very, very hard and they are in communication with us and, um, you know, definitely a partner. But there's a lot that goes into whether or not we have school. Pam has, has worked and I believe a message is going out. There's, uh, like I said, there's four roads that are still very difficult. Moreover, in the Oakview, uh, area, Oakview Middle School area. Um, but we'll be changing some of the bus routing and the stops. And so that communication is going out, um, if it hasn't already. Did it go out yet? Will be going out hopefully. But we are looking to, to make some changes because we don't want to not have, you know, school based off of, uh, those four roads. So hopefully we can do that, still get the children to school safely. Um, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. This time of year, we continue to look at the roads in the morning and make those decisions. Sometimes it's easier in the evening, um, but weather changes a lot too overnight. So, but very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben? Bergit?
Can I just say I'm forever grateful that we don't have to do that decision for the snow days? I'm just everything.
Yeah.
Grateful that that's on your plate. I too want to thank you all for, um, we've got a couple remaining Walden, uh, folks here. And thank you so much for being here tonight. You did a great job. I love robotics and it is, you know, wonderful to see you guys coming along in the ranks and seeing you grow and develop. Well done. Um, I can't help but, um, think, take a moment to thank you all for the recognition, for being board members. While none of us does it up for the accolades, um, it sure is appreciated, everything you've done and said. We appreciate, I appreciate it immensely. Um, Saturday night was Blessings in a Backpack Trivia Night. It was an amazing evening and it was so good to be back. And it was bigger and better than it's ever been before. We had a record attendance and it couldn't have been done without the support of our community as in anything we do is not possible without the support of our community. The board, uh, stepped up to volunteering a lot. We had, uh, yeah, high fiving each other down there. Yeah. So, so Susan and Heather and Danielle and Scott all came and volunteered and they helped make it a wonderful night as did many other people from the community. Um, huge shout out to Erica Lentz and, uh, Jody Holden for really taking it under their, uh, purview to, to create trivia night this year. So thank you to all that were involved. And some of you already know this, but, um, I wanted to make you all aware that I am headed to DC on Saturday. I'll be there from Saturday till Wednesday with the NSBA Advocacy Institute as the MSB GRC Chair. Um, it's a part of what I'm expected to do. And so, uh, it's, I've never done it before. I've never gone to advocacy institute. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, we're on Capitol Hill advocating for our students. So I'm, I'm going as a representative here. I'm going as a representative from the county and also the state. And I'm going to be in really good company because there's 36 from Oakland County going and over 100, which is a record for Michigan going. We're easily taking up a, we're easily the largest delegation of any state going to Capitol Hill this year. So it's kind of exciting. Um, our main focus is full funding for IDEA. Why advocate, you may ask? I would answer this with a Dr. Seuss quote. Unless someone like you or me cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. And so I go on behalf of our students and public schools to advocate. I look forward to reporting back to you at our next meeting.
Awesome. Thank you, Bergit. Susan?
Yeah. It's, it's harder and harder to be at the end because I, I echo everything everyone said. Walden, thank you so much for coming. Um, it was a wonderful presentation. I agree with you. I thought there was a teleprompter, um, and the words were big and the information was amazing. And, um, I noticed that there's so much more than robotics that goes into this team, right? They're learning so many other things, um, going out and getting sponsorships for goodness sakes. And that's amazing. I also learned, and I thought it was great, um, your coach who clearly doesn't have a child still in the program, but still gives so much of her time to make the program a success. So I wanted to thank her. I know she's already gone, but that was amazing to see that she started with her children and continues to give back to Walden. So thank you for that. Ben, thank you very much for your kind words. I think we can all say that it's our privilege to sit up here with you. So we appreciate it when you acknowledge us, but, um, it's, it's definitely not necessary. But thank you.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Jake?
Yeah. The, the Walden, it was, it was great to see the presentation, all the, the preparation that went into it and the teamwork even there of how they were handing the, you know, the, the speaking task back and forth and all bringing different pieces of information. That was, that was great to see and, and very much enjoyed that. Um, for the learning highlights, hopefully we'll have, you know, some more school days and we'll have more highlights to have and.
Start them up tomorrow, Jake.
And, uh, speak, appreciate that, Ben, that as Bergit said, that's not our decision as a school board, but you do such a good job of, of making that decision, you know, in the interest of, of student safety that it's always drives your decisions. And I appreciate that, that, the diligence you put into making these decisions. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jake. Heather? Awesome.
Kevin, you killed it. You did a fantastic job, buddy. VIP of the presentation. Um, I loved it so much. I always love those presentations. I learn a ton. Um, thank you also for the school board recognition.